We are now calling this meeting to order. Para tradición en español, por favor, refiera al código QR localizado en la última página de la agenda. Vice Mayor.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. Thank you.
Let's pray. Father God, it brings us great joy to acknowledge you, Lord, that you're in the chambers tonight. Your presence is here. Father, we want to thank you for this great city of Riverbank, Lord. We lift up our, our council members, their city staff tonight, our mayor, vice mayor. Lord, I just pray, Father, that throughout this night tonight, that God you would dispose upon us wisdom as we make decisions. Father, we are grateful that we have this platform to be able to express ourselves as residents and in our concerns. And then at the end of the day, Lord, I just pray for unity, that moving forward, that each one of us will continue to do our part to make Riverbank the great city that it is. We truly give you all the glory, all the honor and all the praise. En el nombre de Cristo. Amen.
All right, we have some celebrations today. If I can have Dominic and Bryant.
Mayor, we need to conduct roll call.
Just kidding. I got excited. I'm very excited. Roll call please.
Councilmember Odiva?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Councilmember Call?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Here.
Mayor Hernandez?
Here.
Thank you.
And there is just one slight agenda change. We're going to switch the certificates here. And if there's any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, now we have presentations. If I could have Dominic and Bryant and maybe the parents come up? So we are very excited to celebrate you both. Stacy reached out to us and shared about all the amazing work you both are doing in our community. And for the city and for the residents, it's so important that we take care of everybody here. And I know you both noticed that right away. I heard this story about when you first started to care about our homeless population. I would love for you to share that if you're comfortable after I read this present or certificate to you. So a certificate of recognition presented to Dominic and Bryant Mordenoya for the Brotherly Love Project. So this is their project that they developed in recognition of remarkable leadership and a deep commitment to making a positive impact in this community. Through their initiative, the Brotherly Love Project, they have raised funds to provide essential items for homeless people, embodying the spirit of kindness and compassion. So it's assigned by myself today and acknowledged by our city council. So thank you so much for all you've done. And if you're comfortable, I'd love for you to tell your story a little bit. Maybe mom and dad can. Anybody? No? Okay.
This is the second, second year, right? Third year? Third year. They were driving with my mom three years ago and my, my older boy decided they had less fortunate people were, were on the streets and he didn't like that. And he started getting curious, wanted to ask questions and wanted to kind of see what they could do to help out. And little brother was all for it. So they decided to, first year was blankets, cold gear, hand warmers, gloves, chapstick, all kinds of stuff like that. So we kind of got on Facebook and, and through family, friends and, and relatives, they started collecting as much as we could. And that year, I think we gave the first year over, what, a hundred and something personal bags of all that stuff. All, I mean, each bag was pretty substantial and it really, just seeing them get out there, they, they loved it. And really changing people's lives. And second year rolled around, same thing. And third year, we're just really, really trying to do it during the holidays. They want to, they want to help people out. And they're the ones that, that come up with the ideas and, and they really have a joy for it. So just really proud of them and glad they can be recognized because it was, it's really, it was their idea. It wasn't something we told them, hey, you need to go do this. They just wanted to help out. And I think we're doing a good job raising them because that's pretty awesome of them.
Thank you so much. If we can have the council come down for some photos, that'd be great. Yeah. So this is. What's up? So they have raised so far in the three years, right? Over $10,000 for this project on their own. And we have, on behalf of the city, we have this wonderful basket from Morden Farms for you guys. Thank you. So this next item is, are we ready? Do you want to wait a little? Not yet. How about I read the proclamation for National Reading Month? So I will read. There is a proclamation this month. So it's very important for us to partner with educational purposes. So this is on behalf of the city for this month. So it's National Reading Month. Whereas in honor of the birthday of one of America's most admired authors and illustrators, Dr. Seuss marches celebrated as reading month to celebrate and promote the joys and importance of reading across the state and nation. Whereas reading plays a crucial role in our lives, stimulating our imagination, expanding our knowledge of the world and each other, and helping us to develop language skills. Whereas reading is also associated with early childhood learning and development as it helps children to learn sounds, words and language, expands literacy skills and develops ability to focus, concentrate, socialize and communicate. Whereas reading has long lasting health benefits for individuals of all ages, including increased cognitive function, memory, empathy, decreased levels of stress. And whereas during this month, we encourage each other to read every day, spend ample time reading our favorite books, and we commit ourselves to making sure children and young adults read diverse literacy works early and often so they can see themselves and others in what they read. Now therefore, the city council in the city of Riverbank does hereby proclaim March 2025 as reading month in the city of Riverbank. And as Dr. Seuss said, the more you read, the more things you will know, the more that you learn, the more places you will go. Okay, so we have our very own Olivia Ramula, who is Riverbank and the Senate District's Woman of the Year. So we are excited to recognize you. And we're going to have Landon Whitley, the district director for Senator Marie Alvarado Gill, present their certificate first.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to, first of all, thank the council for their indulgence in allowing us to do this presentation. Just wanted to say a few words. Good evening to everybody here. It's great to see a full room in the council chambers. And it's an honor to be here on behalf of Senator Marie Alvarado Gill to recognize an extraordinary woman, Olivia Ramula, as the 2025 Riverbank City Woman of the Year. Olivia has a long, has made a long lasting impact on our community through her leadership in real estate business and service as the broker and owner of Timeless Real Estate in Riverbank. She has helped countless families achieve homeownership. The American dream, right? She also serves as the local vice president of the Women's Council of Realtors for the North Central Valley and is a, has been a dedicated leader within the Lodi and Central Valley Association, Associations of Realtors, mentoring and uplifting future industry professional, professionals. Beyond her career, Olivia's commitment to service is truly inspiring. She's dedicated nearly three decades to leadership roles at Safeway, mentored employees into management positions and champion diversity and education. Her work as an ambassador for the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce and her involvement with local schools and organizations like the Red Cross demonstrate her deep passion for giving back. Yet Olivia's greatest pride is her family. Please. Her hus- her husband, seven children and five grandchildren who inspire her every step of the way. Her leadership, dedication and generosity embody the very spirit of this award. And it's my honor, on behalf of Senator Marie Alvarado Gill and our community, it is my great privilege to present Olivia Ramula with this award as the 2025 Riverbank City Woman of the Year. Congratulations, Olivia, and thank you for all you do.
Can I take a quick picture? Olivia, we want to recognize you on behalf of the city. And I know all of us have a story to tell about how we've worked with you and all the leadership that you have committed to the city. So in recognition of astounding accomplishments, dedication and leadership in the city of Riverbank, your exemplary efforts and contributions have made a significant impact and inspire others to achieve greatness. This certificate is presented with appreciation and admiration of your exceptional achievements and continued commitment to excellence. So it's signed by me today. And on behalf of the city council, we want to thank you for everything. We would love the council to come down for photos. Yeah. Would you like to say something? Yeah, here, please do.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here today. No, no, thank you guys, everyone for coming. Again, I could not do this alone. It takes a village, starting with my husband and my kids, my whole family and every organization that I'm a part of or ever been a part of, my friends and staff in my office and they're, they're my friends. And then just everybody who's, who's been a part of our lives, who's helped us to make these things happen. Because when I volunteer or do something, they all do it with me. And they make the time available for me to be able to live the life that I have and be able to help out and contribute so much. And I just appreciate all of you guys up here for this great honor. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it. And I just, I just hope everybody out there just keep doing their thing and try to make the world a better place themselves, you know, takes us all. And you know, it's all of us working together to build our community and to make it a better place for everybody to live. So thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Very honored. And thank you.
Quickly get Olivia's family up here for a photo.
All right, one, two, three.
Can I get my mom and my family that all came tonight too? I'm so sorry.
Thank you guys.
It was nice meeting you guys. Thank you for all you do. And we're going to get together soon to tour your house, right?
Yeah, we're going to meet them.
All right, one, two, three.
Good job, guys. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, we got a shuffle going. If we could have folks start to move out of the chambers if you're going to exit. Bye. All right, item 7.4. Can we have the community developer come up for a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Joshua Mann, Community Development Director. And tonight I have a brief presentation just to give you an overview and some examples of the type of work that our code enforcement or neighborhood preservation division does. As I said, it's just basically to provide an overview of this division. I'm going to give you some examples. And then at the end, I'll be available for just questions, any general questions you may have. Initially, I just kind of wanted to explain the Community Development Department. We, we had a presentation a few weeks ago on long range planning. So planning is one of our divisions as well as the building division, economic development, and of course, the code enforcement or neighborhood preservation division. Within that code enforcement division, we currently have two staffs. We have our Senior Neighborhood Improvement Officer, Eric White, and we have our Neighborhood Improvement Officer Two, Pat McCollough. Also, I just wanted to point out, we currently have a open recruitment for a part-time neighborhood improvement slash water conservation officer. I just wanted to briefly go over this position as it's a new position for the city. The, the, the role itself will be a part-time position. Basically, they're going to be tasked with providing education outreach and enforcement for three areas. Mainly the SB thirteen eighty-three recycling requirements and the state's, state and cities' water conservation requirements. Also, just wanted to point out, this position will have a modified schedule to assist with after-hours enforcement throughout the city's code. Just a little bit on the role of code enforcement. The basic mission is to enhance Riverbank by fostering a clean, vibrant and welcoming environment that residents can take pride in and enjoy. Just also a side note, enforcing the rules and regulations is not the primary objective. We look at it more as an education and I'm trying to get proactive in the community on that end. Just wanted to also provide a few examples of the, the tasks that this division performs. Primarily, they're responding to citizens' questions, complaints. These complaints can come up, could be a zoning conflict or a zoning issue. Could be abandoned vehicles with that or vehicle parking complaints, RV parking complaints for extended periods of time. Also, we get into property maintenance concerns. We also, like I, like I mentioned earlier, we also focus a lot on educating the public. Education could include health and safety issues. We also would get into noise complaints. And with the noise complaints, similar items, we get into illegal fireworks during the Fourth of July. We've also assisted our sheriff's office with illegal cannabis grows and most recently, the illegal vendors. Want to go through a couple of examples of the type of items that we encounter out in the field. I mentioned abandoned vehicles. So to be considered abandoned vehicle, you would basically need to have it on the street, public street for more than seventy-two consecutive hours. Obviously, these pictures are showing dismantled or inoperable vehicles. Those ones are pretty easy to notice and take care of. Similar, like I mentioned, seventy-two hour parking. Our city code, chapter seventy-one, section oh seven, describes this type of infraction as no person shall stop, park or leave standing any vehicle on any street or highway in the city for seventy-two or more consecutive hours. A similar with that issue is RV parking violations. Chapter seventy-one point sixteen deals with parking of RV vehicles. They define this infraction as any motor home which exceeds twenty feet in overall length, travel trailers, fifth-wheel trailers or trailers with, with houses or boats. The violation basically states it is unlawful to park a recreational vehicle on any public street in the city for more than seventy-two hours with any period, within any period of seven consecutive days. The next area that we do see in the city is graffiti. Graffiti is designed, defined by the city code as any inscription, word, figure or design that is marked, etched or scratched, drawn, painted, pasted or otherwise affixed to, to or on any surface. Just a few pictures of the type of graffiti that we see. And let's see, the next one similar along those lines is trash and junk removal. Chapter fifty, section zero, section three, trash accumulation prohibit, prohibited is defined as it shall be unlawful for any occupant or owner of any building, lot or premises in the city to allow or permit to collect or remain upon such premises any solid waste in such a manner or quantity as it is a fire menace or a health hazard to the people of the city. Also wanted to, to make note of this for the residents, that jilted solid waste does provide all residents in the city two free pickups or bulky item pickups per year. Another area that we get into are signs. Rather than show you a lot of illegal signs, I wanted to focus on some of the signs that are exempt from permitting. Typically, they, to pit a sign for a commercial business, home occupation, they would need to get permission from the planning division. But in these particular cases, such as a construction sign, if a house for sale or maybe a car for sale or for rent sign, those type of signs are exempt. Additionally, is the garage sale sign, open house directional signs, fireworks stands, Christmas tree lots, also pumpkin patches. And then you start getting into political signs, bus bench stop signs, and then professional services. Those type of signs would be like if someone was getting their house painted and then the contractor pits their little sign out front just to advertise his work. Lastly, I just wanted to mention weed abatement. So as we're getting into the spring and summer months, we've had somewhat of a wet spring. So we are expecting to see a lot of weeds this spring. Here's an example of some of the enforcement issues. This is probably an extreme situation here. But it's kind of an ongoing thing as we get into this time of year. I have with me tonight Eric White and Patrick McCollough. We are all three here to answer any questions you may have on any of the topics discussed. Thank you.
I just would like to make sure that our residents understand that you don't go out and look for these things. It's a citizen notification to you that causes you to go out. You don't go out and look for these things. Is that correct?
That's correct. And thank you for the clarification. Primarily, we are a complaint-driven division, meaning that we don't actively go out and look for violations. Obviously, if there's something that's a health and safety immediate issue that's noticed, we may say something like a car, inoperable car in the middle of the street, you know, that could cause a wreck, something like that. But primarily, we are relying on the, the citizens and the, the business owners to file a complaint before we would go out and, and start enforcement efforts.
Any questions?
Uh, no, no questions. Things kind of loud today. Uh, no questions, but I just, I just want to give kudos to, to your code enforcement team, Eric and Pat. Thank you for meeting me this morning, discussing those after-hour issues. We, as a council, we also receive them. We obviously hand it off to you guys. So you guys got a ton of workload just between the two of you. So kudos to you guys. Looking forward to the part-time position being filled out so they can focus on the, the water conservation, but also those after-hour issues that we are seeing. So good job, both of you.
Does the enforcement apply the same for projects like, that are upcoming like Morel and Oakdale's Tiny Home Project and other projects like that, affordable housing?
Describe enforcement, how so?
And the similar, the code enforcement, all the complaint-driven and standards, I guess.
And so, I mean, on a, on a project like that, so we would get into issues if the project was going to construction and maybe there were some complaints. Signs, sometimes we do see kind of illegal signs when construction starts. Because like I mentioned, there is allowances for the professional service signs, but sometimes it goes above and beyond that. So yeah, there may be some involvement. It just depends if, if they're needed or not, depending on the issue.
Mayor, to also add, any grants that are used towards the construction of something like a development like that also has maintenance standards built in that they're required to meet. And so we do do annual inspections on those. Our housing staff performs those and actually has to report those back to the state as well. So even if it's an internal development where it's not a, a public street, we would still do maintenance checks once a year in order to make sure that things like that are not happening within the development.
One of the things I see in Crossroads, because I live by there, is the garage sale signs. Do we have anything in our ordinance that says you can put it up this many days before your garage sale and it has to come down this many days before your garage sale? Because they seem to stay up a long time.
You are correct. There is a limit in there. I apologize. I don't have those, the, the code in front of me right now to, to cite those limits. But there is an expectation that those signs are temporary. You know, they're, they're supposed to be removed shortly after. I can get back to you on the exact timing for those, but I think in general, all cities kind of struggle with garage sale signs. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comment at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, L R A board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes and one comment per person at the, and this time cannot be yielded to another. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. City clerk?
Uh, we have one, but she's not here. And then I don't see anyone on Zoom, but we did receive three written public comments. And I will read those for the record. The first one is from Mr. Sandu. Dear council members, I am writing to express my opposition to the proposed low-income transitional permanent housing development near Oakdale Road and Morel Road. While I understand the need for affordable housing and helping those in need, I am concerned about the potential impact this project may have on our neighborhood. Specifically, I worry about the strain on local infrastructure, financial stability, long-term oversight by C V C R, and the potential negative effect on property values. I believe it is essential to consider alternative locations or more balanced approaches that better align with the character and capacity of our community. It is my understanding that Sierra House will be or already has exhausted their funds. It was mentioned at the last council meeting that this program has had success and recent graduates. I firmly believe for this reason that funding should go to Sierra House instead of the proposed project by C V C R. It was also greatly concerning to the residents of our community discovering the lack of planning and transparency from C V C R at the last council meeting. C V C R have already requested fee waivers prior to submitting their application for grant funding and have not even gone through the pre-planning process with the city. C V C R has also changed the proposal to the type of housing they will build. At the last council meeting, there was a great amount of concern from city council regarding, regarding the Verizon Tower. It is, its proposed location and impact to the community members nearby. I am greatly disappointed that this level of concern and impact was not considered when the, when the council approved the location of this project. The next one is from Ms. Koceri. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Katrina Koceri and I am here on behalf of over two hundred concerned residents from Crossroads West and surrounding neighborhoods. We are here tonight because we believe the proposed tiny home project at the corner of Oakdale and Morel has not been thoughtfully planned and will have serious negative impacts on our community. First and foremost, the location of this project is simply inappropriate. Our neighborhood, neighborhood is growing, family-oriented area with new high-value homes being built. Introducing a transitional or now permanent housing site next to these homes will almost certainly decrease the property values, something that affects not just homeowners, but the economic stability of our entire community. This is not a matter of lacking compassion. It's about ensuring that the development is done responsibly and with long-term foresight. Beyond property values, safety is a significant concern. The demographics of this project will serve, will serve includes individuals struggling with severe mental health issues and substance abuse. While we understand the need for supportive housing, placing it in close proximity to young families, schools and major sports complex is irresponsible. Our children should not be exposed to environments that could put their well-being at risk. The city has a duty to protect all of its residents and situating this project in a densely populated, family-oriented neighborhood fails to do that. We are not here to say no to helping those in need. In fact, we urge the council to consider alternatives that make more sense. Instead of forcing this project onto unsuitable location, why not redirect these funds to the Sierra House? A facility that already is serving population but is struggling due to depleted resources. Investing in an existing program ensures that those in need receive, receive proper support without disrupting stable neighborhoods. We ask that the council listen to the voices of these residents who live and invest in this community. There are other locations that we, that would be more appropriate for this project. Ones that, ones that do not pose a risk at property values, safety and the well-being of our children. Please reconsider the placement of this project and work with us to find a more responsible solution. And the last one is from Mr. Sahir Marcos. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Sahir Marcos and I am writing on behalf of hundreds of residents from Crossroads West who have signed a petition against and are deeply concerned about the proposed tiny home project at Oakdale and Morel. This project does not appear to have been thoughtfully planned and it is, and its placement in our community is both concerning and irresponsible. Putting a high-density, density transitional housing site right next to a brand-new development of expensive homes makes little sense. Homeowners who have invested their savings into this neighborhood will see their property, property values drop, which affects not just individual families, but the economic health of our entire community. Beyond financial concerns, there is a much larger, larger issue at hand, safety. The individuals this project aims to serve often struggle with substance, substance abuse and severe mental illness. While we understand the need for supportive housing, placing this facility near family neighborhoods, schools and sports complex is simply reckless. Our children should not be exposed to this. This is putting them at risk. There are better locations for this project. Ones that do not pose a threat to the safety and well-being of families who live here. And then Darrell? Please.
Hi, thank you for letting me make a comment. My name is Darrell Daniel from two-three-four Atchison Street, Riverbank. Been there thirty-something years. So, and because of that, I've each and every time, especially when you're talking about, you know, cleaning up stuff, I'm actually glad that the city manager let me knew of a, the grant that was, so I was able to fix part of my other stuff because it's very difficult. Like right now, I want to do some more fix-ups, but I can't because I don't have the money for it, really. And it takes money to do it, and even though I'll get some of it back. Yeah, so it's very challenging, especially with so much competition in town and things that I've had to go through. But our biggest thing is, is that when you bring, build it and they will come, of course. That's what the Costco is and they just build just massive amount of stuff like that. But to try, I'm trying to do is not make downtown a deadville. Okay, and that's what I think everybody has always been trying to do, get little businesses in there and stuff like that. And that's why each and every time I'll talk about something over and over about building things that's from anything from Ugas, there's at least five out of eight blocks that are doing nothing, absolutely nothing. And I've heard over and over from everybody that says you can't touch it, you can't do anything about it and something like that. And, but it's, you know, I still, you, you're talking about old cars and stuff like that. Well, actually, I don't know, is it on Santa Fe or what? It's like a museum of classic tractors and things like that. And they're in the county, actually, in the city, county track, whatever. I, I drive by there every so often, just look at the tractors. I want to get some white pictures and stuff like sometimes. And, but that's an attraction of, once upon a time, can you believe Randy Setliff? You know, that place was a nothing for so many years. And he had his parents pass away, his uncles pass away and everything's, you know, they've all passed away now. And so now he's made that place, that's probably on Atchison. It's probably about the best-looking sign. It's probably about the best-looking sign and flowers, and he painted the font, and he's got a little thing, and he worked with you guys on that subject even before the grant, I think. I'm not sure. But it looks really awesome, and he's building a little bit, a little inside too and stuff like that. So, and I think, you know, give him whatever time he needs to, to build, that he's doing whatever he's, you know, going like that. But what I'm getting at is, takes a go. You know, what is that? Is that going to be something? Is that, are they have the plan? That's really what the people, uh, the cities should be doing is saying, oh, is that says that, you know, okay, you're doing nothing with it, but what are you planning on doing with it? What are you planning to do with Setlift's Ugas or the, uh, Setlift, the, what's it called, Ugas thing? So, uh, different other buildings. Thank you.
Manny?
Oh, all right, God. Mayor, vice mayor, council members, thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. My name is Manuel Rivera. My wife and I bought a house at the Crossroads West, uh, going two years, August. Uh, um, a little bit of all myself. I did serve five years to United States Army, uh, Infantry deployed to Afghanistan. I've been awarded medals for combat, actual combat. Came back, worked for Department of Homeland Security for five years and lived on the east side of San Jose. If you guys have not been there and familiar with it, there's liquor stores two, ten feet, twenty feet away from each other, all around the east of San Jose. Uh, we had, from where we live, walking distance, we had group homes, low-income housing, um, shelter for homelesses. You know, people rent their houses out for them. I cannot explain the day that we left, how happy I was to be here. Not just for my PTSD, but for the safety of my daughter. My stepson and my daughter will never walk outside, never be outside without us. Here, I walk around, kids are running around playing, having fun like it was when I was growing up. Down there, we had people not come to our house, stomp at our doors, ask for somebody that's never lived there. We had people actually go, go up to my wife and ask her if they could fuck her. It's very serious for me, very passionate being when it comes to the safety of my family. Not just that, but the drugs, the shootings, they were around. Police, ambulance, daily basis, helicopters, fighters. When we moved and came here, I was thankful for God. I was happy that I was here. And I disapprove so much of this project because everything that I've seen, not just from the military and war, but what I've seen from the Department of Homeland Security and from what I've seen living on the east side of San Jose, which is horrible place. In two cases, they broke into my house. I as a veteran, I as a family man, as a protector from a family, stood outside with them, held the gunpoint. I will defend my family. And I want to go, go ahead and caveat to my neighbors that spoke out. I also too, I'm very disappointed that there was a chance for such a disapproval for the, for the towers. But when it came for us, it was basically, we'll wait and see, we'll wait and see. Something said in there that we're not knowing that you guys want to go so bad over there. Finally, I just want to say honestly, through everything I've been through, my experience, this can be problems for our community. This can be problems for our families. All I'm saying is the last thing you want to do is wake up in the morning, hearing the news that somebody from the neighborhood broke into a house. God forbid, blood was shed. If it was, it'd be in your hands, because we're here telling you, we're not against it, just away. Open space on the east side of Riverbank. Take that place.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Council members, thank you for your time. Citizens, thank you. God bless America.
Debbie, are there any other?
Yeah. Uh, Steven Vegas?
Hello, how are you? My name is Steven Vegas. I live in the Crossroads of the West. Um, I moved to Riverbank two years ago. When I moved to Riverbank, I moved to Riverbank because it was a small, quiet town. Um, I grew up in the Bay Area. I have another house on the west side of Modesto. If you've been to the west side of Modesto, it's horrible. It looks like downtown Oakland. So, you know, jumping forward, you know, I see that we're building these tiny homes in my neighborhood. Um, like the last gentleman, you know, stated, I don't want that kind of stuff in my neighborhood. I paid a lot of money for my house. I pay a lot of property tax. I pay a lot for just everything in Riverbank. And then to have these tiny homes come in here with people that ain't being like vetted, I mean, how do we know these people aren't sex offenders? We have hundreds of kids in the area. We got schools. Like, we all know that the sex offender registry, nobody follows it. So now we're putting our kids in jeopardy of possible sex offenders. Like, how is that okay? That is not okay. Um, like, I'm just not, not too happy with it after hearing about those houses getting moved in. I mean, I thought about selling and leaving Riverbank just because of that. Like, I'm not, not satisfied with it. I know my wife's been to some of these neighborhood events with a lot of the other folks. I've never attended them. Um, I finally got home early today to be able to come down here and talk to you folks, but that's kind of my stance on it. I'm just not, not happy with it at all. I don't think they should be there. Um, my wife, you know, she does a lot of stuff with the homeless and in the community, like they need, they need services, they need mental health services. Some of these homeless people, like, they're not getting the services they need, or they're, they're given the services, but they're not taking the correct medication. So they're, they're just, you know, they go out of their mind. And now we're going to have this walking around our neighborhoods, you know, with our small children, and it's just not acceptable. Like, they can be placed some other, some other area away from our kids, away from our homes. Like, property value is one thing, but safety is the most important part. Um, for me and my children, and I know some of the other folks are worried about their kids' safety too. And like the last gentleman said, like, as a father, if somebody does something to my child, no law is going to stop me from handling what I have to handle. And nobody in this room wants to be put in that position. We just want our areas to be safe, our kids to be safe, and us to be able to live fine. I mean, it's hard to make a living, especially in, you know, today's age. Everything's extremely expensive. And, you know, to tell you about the area, I was, lived in the area for, I think it was like a year and a half. Somebody literally dumped garbage in front of my house when I got up at two o'clock in the morning to leave. I found a police officer. I said, hey, somebody dumped garbage in front of my house at like twelve o'clock at night, chairs, all kinds of stuff. He made a report. Nobody came and picked it up. So if they can't do that, how can I expect you guys to keep my kids safe? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that is all I have. We didn't get any other public comment cards. Mari, I'm going to mess up your name. Mari Scarza? Mari Chris, sorry.
It's not the first nor the last. Um, good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Mary Chris and I'm here today to express my strong opposition to the, to the proposed location of the transitional and permanent housing to the Oakdale and Morel Road area. As a community, we take great pride in our neighborhood and are deeply concerned about the potential impact this project will have on the safety and well-being of our residents, especially our children. This area is newly developed community where families have chosen to live and raise their children. It is also adjacent to a sports complex that serves as central hub for youth activities. Um, events, maybe possibly school events. I know that it's not as, you know, widely used, but I know that it can be. Introducing a traditional transitional and permanent housing in this specific location would not be appropriate for the growth and future of our neighborhood. While we recognize the need to support individuals facing homelessness, mental health challenges, and substance use issues, placing such a facility in the nearby frequently um used area by children and families raises serious concerns about the safety and long-term community stability. Additionally, the twenty million grant that C V C R is applying for, which is Home Key Plus, that supports Proposition One is not exclusively designed to help individuals aging out of the foster care. Instead, it broadly includes individuals at risk of or experiencing homelessness, those struggling with mental health and substance abuse issues and veterans. This means the facility will be open to a wider population than what it is being portrayed. Rather than providing a targeted solution for a specific vulnerable group, the project risks is introducing more challenges to our city that aims to solve. We must ensure that transitional and permanent housing projects are placed in an appropriate location, one that serves both those in need and protects the surrounding community. The Oakdale and Morel Road site does not meet this criteria. We urge the council to reconsider and prioritize the safety and well-being of the families who have built and invested their lives in this area. Thank you.
Lisa Potter?
For it all, so please bear with me. Okay, good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Lisa Potter, and I'm here today to strongly oppose the proposed housing project on Morel and Oakdale. While I understand the need for more housing placing this development right next to our community's recreation field is a serious mistake, one that could have lasting consequences for the children and families who rely on this space. One of the biggest concerns is the population this development will bring into direct contact with our children. Many of the residents in the proposed, in this proposed housing project are expected to be individuals struggling with substance abuse and severe mental illness. While we must support those in need, placing a high-risk population so close to recreational space for children is not the solution. Our priority should be keeping this area safe and secure for kids and families who use it daily. Beyond safety concerns, this project also poses risks related to traffic, loitering, and overall community stability. Increased foot traffic from individuals facing serious personal challenges could lead to situations that make parents uncomfortable, allowing their kids to play freely. The Recchner should be a safe haven, not an area where families feel on edge about who it might be around. There are better locations in our city for this type of housing. Places where residents can receive the support they need without directly impacting a space designated for children. I urge you to please, please reconsider this project and explore alternative locations. This, um, that balance the need for housing with the responsibility to protect our community. Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it.
Sue Barnes?
Council members, uh, Sue Barnes and I live in Heartland Drive in Crossroads. My comments are based on the last meeting we had and um, uh, I was, I'm just going to ask the questions. I don't know if you answer them at some point or just so that you know what my concerns are. Um, again, it's about the builder and not being prepared uh to, um, when, when is the deadline for acquiring the funds from uh the um grants or whatever the government monies are. Um, they're now incorporating Prop One, which means it's not going to be a community Riverbank uh-supported program. It means that then anybody, any city in the county can uh send applicants to live in these proposed homes. Does the city approve the plans without funding in place? Um, asking for the fees that, that of the two-point-one million, uh, doesn't waiving these fees also set precedence for future prod, other projects? Um, how much of the ways, waive proposed fees are passed on to the taxpayers and property owners? How can a project propose thirty-seven units and jump to seventy units on the same parcel? Original proposal was Riverbank community serving our, our needy residents. I guess I addressed that. Okay, so uh, who does vetting? What, what are the qualifications for the program? We have a flyer that um from the Home Key website that directly emphasizes uh the mental health, wellness, and well-being, safe, affordable housing. Um, it's quite informative of what they um failed to inform us about what their found, uh, what their foundation for or basis for their projects are. The transitional, is it permanent? Is it uh, is it transitional houses? Uh, and again, when monies dry up, which it does for these projects, uh, is that passed on to the taxpayers? Nothing's free. Someone has to pay for these lack of fundings. Um, what is the incentive to move out and up if the government subsidizes the rent on these tiny homes? If they get that project there, do you think their residents are going to look out their window across at these new homes that are seven-hundred-and-fifty to a million plus and say, oh yeah, that's my next step? That's, that to me would be defeating um a, as a person who might be in one of these projects. And again, if it's permanent housing, there's no incentive, incentive really for them to leave that area. There's, oh, I didn't even get a warning. Okay, um, there is no outdoor living and um that sports complex will be misused by the people living there because they don't have any outdoor living. I've seen drug deals there during the day when the park is closed. I've called it into the police. And um there are adults hanging around smoking and doing such things, and that will be a negative impact on that whole area. Thank you.
Sal, go on.
My first time ever to speak. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Sal. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I come before you not because I'm against providing housing for these people in need, but because I am deeply concerned about the location of this project at the corner of Morel. I have lived in the area for uh about a year and a half. I have lived in areas that are very similar to what you guys are, want to uh approve here. And places where drugs, crime, violence become an everyday reality, I have seen firsthand what happens when at-risk young individuals strug, struggling with severe mental illnesses and low-income housing, where low-income housing are clustered together without the right infrastructure, support, and oversight. I don't want my grandchildren or any other children in this community exposed to the dangers that often comes with these environments. Uh, when they are, when they aren't properly managed, especially since it's going to be right next to the uh recreational uh park here in, in the neighborhood. It is not equipped to handle the challenges that this development will bring. Um, Morel and Oakdale is a residential area with families, schools, par- parks. It's already struggling with traffic problems and safety concerns, adding high-concentration project, housing project for vulnerable populations without a clear, detailed plan for security or community support will put both the residents of the development and the surrounding neighborhood at risk. I ask you, what safeguards will be in place to ensure that the crime, drug activity do not follow? How would law enforcement and emergency services handle the additional strain? What outreach programs and mental health services will be on-site to prevent the cycle of violence and addiction from continuing? We all want to help those in need, but that help must be thoughtful, strategic, and safe for everybody. Placing this development in a primarily residential neighborhood without the proper resources in place is a recipe for disaster. I have seen this happen in other cities. Good intentions lead to bad outcomes. I urge you to reconsider this location. If this type of housing is necessary, it should be placed where support services are readily available, not in the middle of a family neighborhood that isn't prepared to handle it. We want a safe, thriving community for everyone, including those who need assistance. But this plan as it stands is not the right way to do it. Thank you for your time. I hope you will listen to the concerns of the people who live here and work with us to find a better solution. Thank you for your time. I hope you will listen to the concerns of the people who live here and work with us to find a better solution. Thank you.
Rosalind, Rosalind Chandra?
Yeah, city leaders, staff, public. My name is Rosalind Chandra. I am currently a resident in Riverbank, California. I'm here to oppose, I'm here to voice my opposition to the tiny home project that is proposed to be built on the corner of Morrell and Oakdale Road in Riverbank, California. I understand that there is a need for more housing for everyone, from homeless to the general public. But you, the River of City Bank, are proposing a community of 67 tiny homes, accommodating two to four individuals each. Sixty-seven, not five, not 10, not 20, 67. This, that's approximately 134 to 268 individuals. Mind you, this is not just any group of individuals, but a very special group of people. This group of proposed neighbors will come from various backgrounds. Some could be criminal, incarceration, addicted, trauma, mental illness, psychiatric conditions, abuse, assault, rape, molestation, possible sex offenders, brokenness, family separation, and on and on. More importantly, perhaps most importantly, they may dislike being confined to a small space like a tiny home. They may have increased anxieties and traumatic triggers as they find themselves living in such small places with such close proximity to people and to the community. They may experience anxiety and agitation from the sports complex as there's an array of events being hosted from bright lights, noise, activities, games, practices, and events. They may even become anxious and agitated with so many kids and families all around. You are taking this group and placing them centrally within the city region, near a gym that has a Silver Sneakers program where seniors gather daily for exercise, near elementary schools, school bus stops, residential neighborhoods, families and children. Along with housing, we are aware that these individuals will need plenty of services. I recently learned of Valley Streets. They provide a van that goes to low-income homeless community areas and provide services. Along with the basic medical care, they distribute harm reduction supplies, smoking kits, safe snorting kits, clean needles, pipes, and condoms. Their efforts are all, they also have efforts underway to access gender-affirming hormone therapy like syringes and injectable hormones. Is this really what you, the city, want for our community? To have this project in a location that is so close to community, family, schools, kids? We, as a community, are deeply concerned that a project like this will lack proper planning, proper funding, and proper oversight. A population of this demographic and caliber in our community will be the key word disastrous. This will strain local services such as EMS, fire, police, public utilities, healthcare, transportation. The increase in population will lead to traffic congestion, overcrowding on roads, walkways, sidewalks. Our area will greatly suffer the loss of community character, which it currently has. There is also a concern for increased crime rate, theft, decrease in property value, increase in property taxes to support this. As a city, it's your obligation to make the right choice. Here are concerns. Work with us. Move this project and the funds elsewhere. Thank you.
Mayor, that is all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, consent calendar, item 9.1, wave readings. Item 9.2, approval of the City Council LRA Authority Board minutes for March 11, 2025. And item 9.3, resolution toward contracts for Jacob Myers Park food vendors to Ice Ice Baby Ice Cream and Blue Collar Cafe.
Mayor, I would like to make a correction to the minutes of March 11. For clarification, the appointment of alternate Planning Commissioner Armando Rodriguez should state that he was a mortgage lender, not a realtor. So we'll make that correction to the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve as amended?
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the amendment to item 9.2.
Second.
Call please.
Councilmember Odiva?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
We have some unfinished business. Item 11.1, a resolution for 2025 to, question mark? And adopting the City Council Rules and Procedures Handbook and updating the process for the council members to place items on the agenda.
So Mayor and Council, this item is returning to you after a workshop by our Deputy City Attorney Nubia Goldstein, who is here tonight as well, with regards to the City Council Rules and Procedures Handbook. We'd had some changes made to the original draft that was presented, so we wanted to bring that back for consideration by council, as well as updating the policy that we currently have on how council members place items on the agenda so that it mimics what was presented in the handbook. So just really quickly, the intent of the handbook was developed to clarify the procedures of the City Council, serves as a reference point for the state-mandated rules for city officials, and standardizes the practices of the City Council. The handbook clarifies the expectations for city officials and increases transparency. The draft was presented on February 25, and with the feedback, we had two recommended changes. The first is to Chapter 1, Section B6, where the previous language stated that it's the custom and practice that the mayor gives an annual or biannual State of the City address sponsored by the City Chamber of Commerce. Of course, here, our practice is that it is the city that hosts that event, and so we did remove the Chamber of Commerce reference. The second item was with regards to council member appointments, which is in Chapter 5. The previous language stated that the mayor shall, instead of nominating, simply announce the appointment of the designated council members. Our standard practice has been that council members volunteer for nominations to any committee or whether internal or external with another agency. And so instead of the mayor nominating or announcing the appointment, the new language does state that the council member may volunteer annually to serve on intergovernmental agencies or committees. There was some discussion about the term of that appointment, and the feedback that we received from the majority of the council was that the appointment should be for one year with the option for the council member to be reaffirmed for a second consecutive year, which would ensure the continuity and active participation in regional and state matters. The second item, as I mentioned, is updating our scheduling agenda items policy, which was initially adopted in August of 2004 and went through an update in 2008. That sets forth the process for how council and citizens can place items on the agenda. And so the section that's related to council was proposed for an update based on the handbook. So the previous process is you would contact myself to place an item on the agenda, and then the council member would present on their own in order to obtain concurrence from council to proceed with evaluating the item that was being presented. And/or you could mention the item during council comment section, and if at least two other council members reached out to the city manager, the item would be placed on the agenda for discussion. The new process based on the handbook is that we were, we are going to add a council member referral section to the agenda. So this allows for council to reach out to me directly to place an item on the agenda by 5:00 PM on the Monday before agenda is posted to be added. Council members will discuss the item and obtain support or concurrence from council in order to proceed with investigating and further development of the item being discussed. And so with that, the recommendation tonight is there are two separate resolutions being proposed for adoption. One is to adopt the City Council Rules and Procedures Handbook, and the second is to update the process for council members to place items on the agenda. And I believe those items can be taken concurrently or they can be voted on individually if.
That's, that's correct.
And does the, the lack of the proceeding year mean indefinitely? Is that what that means for the resolutions 2025 to?
Those were placeholders, so that, that's the intent of, of having those cross marks. But they will be filled in concurrently with your subsequent resolution numbers by the city.
Okay, so are there any council comments or questions? Was it previous conversation? Any public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back for motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve item 11.1 for both resolutions.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Odiva?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Right, item 12.1, a resolution approving the addendum to initial study and mitigated negative declaration document prepared for the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project.
Dakota Bridgewater, your Public Works Director, will provide the staff report on this item.
Mayor, members of City Council, tonight's presentation is regarding the addendum to the IS MND that was adopted by council in December of 2022. So just a little bit of an outline for the presentation. Provides a high-level summary of the project, reviews requirements under SEQA, summarizes the initial study findings, summarizes the environmental review process, presents the initial study mitigated negative declaration addendum information, and presents recommended actions for council. So project summary, some of the needs of the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant include an increase of capacity to meet current, which is 1.6 million gallons per day, and future, which is the 30-year projection of 2.29 million gallons per day. So each new home is expected to produce approximately 200 gallons of wastewater per day, and this provides an alternative to expansion of our existing percolation disposal. As council knows, the only method of disposal that the city currently has is evaporation and percolation ponds. When those fill up, we're balance, we're doing a water balancing act throughout the facility to try and maintain free board and not be in violation with the state. The treatment to improve the water quality integrates nitrogen removal, which is not practical with our current treatment plant setup, and reduces our reliance on the percolation and disposal and load to the ponds itself. And the project will address concerns regarding groundwater nitrogen and compliance with discharge requirements, which is in the basin plan amendment for nitrate and CV salts that the state has implemented. And the project also allows for current and future beneficial use of a water resource. Recycled water will be used for agricultural irrigation in the direct vicinity, and it'll reduce our reliance on local groundwater through in lieu recharge by providing a high-quality irrigation water to the farmers. They will not have to pump that groundwater out of our local aquifer. And it also provides a small revenue source for the disposal and recycled water use activities and establishes a basis for future expansion and additional uses of recycled water. History of the project development, in April of 2016, council presentation for reconnaissance opportunities for recycled water. August of 2017, council presentation of reconnaissance study and discussion of drivers for the project, including regulatory policy, capacity, and phasing. In October of 17, council authorized staff to submit applications for two planning grants to study the recycled water project. In August of 2020, council presentation and input to draft recycled water studies and master plan analysis. In October of 2020, city council presentation of recycled water study and master plan analysis and input. In June of 21, city council meeting presenting the public review drafts of the recycled water planning studies and master plan reports. September of 21, council presentation of the final reports for submittal to the State Water Resources Control Board. September of '22, regular meeting the city council, including review and overall project need, scope, schedule, with council input to potential project phasing with currently planned project scope consistent with the project as described in the IS MND. And in December of 2022, city council adopted the initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the Riverbank Recycled Water Project. So SEQA requires agencies or lead agencies to consider potential environmental effects of the proposed action or project, disclose effects to agencies and the public, and incorporate mitigation to reduce significant effects. So in compliance with SEQA, the city prepared an initial study, which is the environmental analysis, mitigated negative declaration, which is the findings, and what's here before you today is the addendum to the IS MND for the new boundaries of the project. So the reasons for the addendum, as you can see in the yellow areas there, number one, being a new borrow area, which is in Pond P9 located at the southwest corner of the treatment facility. That has changed from Pond T4 to Pond P9, and the reason being is during initial studies of the ponds and the the soils analysis, there's a great deal of sludge in T4 that would require de-watering disposal in order to be able to borrow dirt from that area. Pond P9 is a disposal pond, no sludge, existing earth, and so what we're proposing to do is use Pond P9 as a borrow pit. A borrow pit is essentially an area where you harvest dirt in order to use it throughout the project and for fill instead of importing and purchasing additional earth. And the second item is the new route for the recycled waterline Pipeline B, which would head east from the wastewater treatment plant to an adjacent property for use as agricultural irrigation water. Originally, this line was planned to be in the Henry Road extension, which is the current access to the treatment facility. But in initial studies and initial engineering, it was determined that there's not enough room in that roadway to install a pipe, and then there's not enough clearance underneath between the road and the train tracks in order to get equipment in there to perform the excavation. So staff is proposing to run a waterline through Jacob Meyer Park and provide another alternative irrigation water for the park itself so that we wouldn't have to use drinking water to irrigate the park. The park could use the recycled water from the treatment facility.
Just a quick question, the, the change order to Henry Road, did that have to do anything with like slope evaluation at all?
Just the narrowness of the road itself and the ability to actually construct in that area limited our ability to use it.
Okay, got it.
It's basically a one-lane road. So these new areas redefined the project limits, which requires the addendum to the SEQA analysis. And then the, sorry, the yellow item you see there down just south of P4 is a construction access road that will need to be utilized. So that's why that's included as well. So the project would result in potentially significant impacts related to biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, transportation and tribal cultural resources. But incorporation of the mitigated measures identified in the original IS MND reduced these impacts to less than significant levels. So no changes to these impacts occur based on the changes to the project description as defined in the addendum. So the final IS MND incorporates minor text changes, and the mitigation and monitoring and reporting program incorporates all mitigation measures identified in the original IS MND. So staff recommends that council approve the addendum to the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, sign and file a notice of determination with San Joaquin County and pay the county administrative and California Department of Fish and Wildlife SEQA filing fees, and file a notice of determination with the State Clearinghouse. And then I would be happy to answer any questions that staff may have or council may have.
Any other questions or comments from council? Do you have a timeline of what it would look like if we were to proceed with Jacob Myers Park and the impact there?
So the construction window for that is relatively short, and we would be working very closely with Michael and his team to do it in a time where it wasn't peak park season. So maybe in the wintertime somewhere where the park's not being utilized that much. And the, the impact would probably be a 24-inch wide trench, approximately four feet deep. And as the pipe is being installed, it's being backfilled as well. So it would be an open trench, but it would be pretty minimal impact. I'm thinking four to six weeks total.
Any public questions or comments? Okay, I will bring it back to council for further questions or comments. Okay, I will bring it back to council for further questions or comments or a motion.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item twelve point one.
Second.
Bro call please.
Council member Odiva.
Yes.
Council member Pimentel.
Yes.
Council member call.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse. Mayor Hernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. All right. Comments and reports from our city manager.
Just one today, let me find it real quick here. Well, mayor and council, mayor, you are aware, but council, I'm happy to share that the Crossroads West Commercial Project has been selected as project of the year by Opportunity Stanislaus. It is a competitive nomination process and was reviewed by a panel. I can't tell you who nominated it, but we won, so really, really excited for that. Um, so Opportunity Stanislaus has invited us to the award ceremony, which is on Thursday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty five. That's going to be from five thirty P M. To seven thirty P M. At the Dust Bowl Brewing Company. Uh, we are receiving some complimentary tickets that will not be enough to cover all of council. So I do want to make sure that those who want to attend do attend, so we will obtain additional tickets. So please, uh, message me A S A P as if you're able to attend, uh, so that we can make sure to make the necessary reservations. And that is all from staff.
Right, Vice Mayor.
Last week I got to go to Riverbank High School with, uh, Rachel and we taste tested desserts for the state of the city. They were yummy and we're looking forward to those desserts. So if you're coming to the state of the city, bring a dessert tummy, because there's going to be lots of fun stuff. Um, April fourteenth is the next meeting for the Riverbank Historical Society and it's located in the building behind our facility. And then, uh, May eighteenth, from nine to one, the Riverbank Historical Society and the Federated Women's Group will be having their after Mother's Day pancake breakfast this year. Not an omelet, but a pancake breakfast at the community center. And we look forward to everybody coming out. Tickets can be purchased by myself. Uh, there will be some over in parks if they want to pick up there. I have them for you, Michael. And, um, or you can call, uh, myself or any member of the historical society to get those. Thank you.
Awesome. Council member Odiva.
Thank you. So I'm looking forward to, so this Thursday I'll be, uh, flying out. Sorry this mic is so loud. I'll be flying out to Burbank, uh, for the League of California Cities as the representative on the Revenue and Taxation, uh, Subcommittee. Uh, we're going to be having some panel discussions on housing, community, uh, economic development, uh, policies. Uh, there's going to be a section there about online sales, tax allocations, and there's some kind of zip code mismatching. So I'm kind of going to be nerding out, uh, a little bit on that. Uh, locally here, um, I, I see some Love Riverbank, uh, committee members here, so shout out to you guys. Uh, Love Riverbank is going to be April twenty sixth, the projects are live, so sign up. I'm excited for those, uh, chamber installation. I know Olivia was going to, because was going to mention this, um, um, but she, we had some other things going on. Uh, so it's going to be, uh, this Friday, it's going to be at Percos. They're going to be installing, uh, two new board members. Uh, it's going to be at six P M. Uh, here at Percos. And finally, um, Red Robin's going to be, uh, teaming up again with Sister Cities. We're going to do one more fundraiser at Red Robin's. Um, it's going to be this Saturday, the twenty ninth. Um, a lot of the committee's going to be there around six P M. So, you know, feel free, stop by, um, join us for a meal. Um, twenty percent goes towards, uh, Sister Cities. We're doing a lot of, a lot of good stuff for that committee, so, um, looking forward to it. And that's all I got.
Council member Pimentel.
I just want to say that, um, the church that I attend, Community Praise Tabernacle, we have a new location, thirty-two oh eight Stanislaus Street, Pastor Elias Cordova. We're going to have a ribbon ceremony in the near, uh, future, like to invite the mayor and city council. When I have more information on that, I'll post it and then I'll let the council know. Thank you.
Council member call.
Uh, so after the last city council meeting, I went to the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance meeting. I am a member on that committee, um, and I was able to share the Sierra House statistics. I'm going to share them all with you. There were seventy-eight men and eighty-one, eighty-one women who utilized the day use showers. And with these efforts, they were also able to be provided clean clothing and a hot meal. Um, and then the three residents who graduated from the restart program, when are we going to do certificates for them?
So we've been discussing what that may potentially look like. Uh, not everybody is comfortable being out in the public, so we're certainly looking for ways to be able to accommodate that.
Maybe we can do it at their house out front.
More to come, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then Modesto has a new facility. It's part of the bridge housing, so they're individual units, um, where people live, just of quite a few on one property. Dignity Village, they're having their opening Thursday. And then, um, Modesto Gospel Mission was able to present. They have Hannah's House for Women and Children, um, that's approximately ninety days out. It's a three and a half million dollar privately funded project that provides a hundred beds for women and children. And the Modesto Gospel Mission also went over Valente Roasters. And for those who know me, I'm a coffee nerd. Um, and it's a social enterprise of the Modesto Gospel Mission that provides work experience, drop, job training and helps make these individuals more employable, um, out in the world. And, uh, the biggest takeaway, again, after my last Shaw meeting was, um, it's important to have sustainable methods of funding for these sort of facilities, uh, because the money does run out. Um, and then I also met with El Concilio and how we can bring their services to Riverbank with a partnership. We discussed an opportunity for office hours here in Chambers to reach our community on social services, English classes and even health education. I also reached out to Riverbank Police Services to see how we can, um, maybe some things that they see in the streets to help us bridge that gap between our communities. Uh, so hopefully we can work something out there. Um, mayor and I went to the Cal, uh, cities, League of California City Central Valley Division dinner last week. Uh, for me personally, I just enjoy the opportunity to connect with other city leaders. Being a newer council member, um, it's a big mentorship opportunity to hear about the, uh, new legislation coming through and I, and connect with people kind of asking for advice or just, hey, what are you guys doing? So it's really a great opportunity. Um, March sixteenth, uh, Crossroads West community member hosted a gathering in her home. She reached out to me personally to be a part of it. So I did go, um, there was about a dozen community members there who were addressing their concerns that we heard tonight, uh, to gain more insight on several topics within the city, like meeting, um, cadences, infrastructure, housing numbers, proposed project on Maril and overall planning process. I appreciate the opportunity to have an open and respectful discussion with my, uh, constituents. The new Chase Bank in Crossroads West is open as of March eighteenth. So if you're a Chase banker, um, it's open. And then, um, Stanislaus Latino Chamber of Commerce tomorrow, um, here in Chambers. They have a business one oh one, uh, series on human services here from six to seven thirty. So if you own a business and have human resource questions, I encourage you to come. And then April nineteenth is the Modesto Nuts Chamber Mixer with Stanislaus Latino Chamber.
All right, um, let me see, I'm looking at my calendar. Um, on March fifteenth, um, the American Association for University Women hosted all four women mayors from Stanislaus County, so Turlock, uh, Turlock's mayor, Oakdale's mayor, Modesto's mayor and myself, uh, on a panel, um, to talk to community members. So Turlock hosted it, um, and it was a great opportunity to, to be in, uh, community with, with them. Um, and I think it's just, it's difficult with everyone's busy schedule, so it was nice to be there. Um, let me see, we did go to Riverbank High School and so they are preparing for, uh, two hundred attendees. So like, uh, Vice Mayor said, please, please come hungry. Um, let me see, I attended Stan Cog. And, uh, I am currently on the executive committee and am now the member on the California Regional, uh, Council of Governments and on the regional locally here, Value Vision, um, committee, both of which have yet to meet yet. And then, let's see, I don't want to, uh, reiterate anything that's been said already. But, uh, I will also be going to Burbank for the Community Services Policy Committee, uh, to listen in on and participate as part of the committee. I, uh, attended the dinner as well and am serving as the, it's, it's a complicated leadership structure, but as a second vice president for our Central Valley Division. Um, so it's, it is a really great organization to be a part of. And I'm trying to look ahead a little bit as well. Um, I guess that's it for now, but if anyone wants to share a calendar with me, I will add you. So send me your email, but, um, I think that is it. We do not have a closed session, so, oh, oh my gosh, yes, the state of the city. So, uh, next week, Thursday, um, we are making a huge effort to involve the community. So, uh, we have Riverbank High School providing the food. We have a local florist providing some of the decorations. We have, um, a collective space providing some of the decorations for that as well. We have three nonprofit sister cities, Love Riverbank and the Chamber, providing some information on some local initiatives and, um, so much more. So we will have the five, the five to six P M. Be a more of a social mixer hour and then I will make the program as short as possible at six o'clock. So I hope to see you all there. And our next meeting is on Tuesday, April eighth, this meeting is now adjourned.